Good afternoon and welcome to the July 1st, 2025 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members. Azadrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Will you please read the closed session?
Closed session item A: Anticipated Litigation, Potential Initiation of One Case. B: Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation. C: Conference with Legal Counsel in the Matter of Topazikian versus City of Glendale. D: Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Two Cases Brought by Central BWB LLC. E: Conference with Labor Negotiators Unrepresented Positions, City Manager and City Attorney.
And we do not anticipate reporting out on anything, Mr. Mayor. Okay, we will recess to closed session. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 1st, 2025 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members. Azadrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. May we have your report?
I think we have the flag salute first.
We're gonna shake it up. Let's have your report.
Oh, okay.
Who's C?
The agenda for the July 1st, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on June 27th, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the flag salute? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Will you please remain standing as we welcome Will Clausen, Elder of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, to give us the invocation?
I'd love to share a quick scripture from the Book of Mormon. And their meetings were conducted after the manner of the workings of the Spirit and by the power of the Holy Ghost. I'd love to say a quick prayer to invite the Holy Ghost to be here with us. Dear God, eternal Father of us all, we ask thee today that we may be able to feel the companionship of the Holy Ghost in this meeting. We're so thankful for this wonderful country which thou hast given us. We're so thankful for this wonderful council which is here today to discuss the workings of the city of Glendale. We ask thee for guidance and that we may be able to do thy will to the benefit of those who reside here in this city. And we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. Please read the next item.
Next are presentations and appointments. The only presentation is an announcement on July 8th. There will be no city council meeting, and the next regular council meeting and housing meeting will be on July 15, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to item four.
Item four are consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion and a second. Let's take roll call, please.
Council members. Azadrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Next are city council and staff comments.
I'll start with Mr. Garpetian. Come around the...
Just a couple of quick events that I attended. Glendale Latino Association's annual scholarship breakfast meeting. It was another successful meeting that organized by GLA, and they raise funds to provide scholarship to great students and help them in their future. Congratulations. Also, I attended Sir Optimist International's Dare to Dream Installation Luncheon. They're one of the largest international organizations that raise funds to help women and young ladies in their lives, in their future, for any kind of need they have, they support them. And I attend every year, and it's always packed, always packed. I had friends who wanted to attend. I called the city and said, "We need tickets." "Sorry, we're sold out." And that's a good thing. So, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian.
I want to wish everyone a very safe and happy July 4th holiday. Remind folks that not only is it illegal to set off your own fireworks, but you also may pose a danger to your neighbors and yourself in terms of a fire, potentially. Or worse, you know, it could be physical harm. We've seen some and read about terrible accidents. If you want to enjoy a safe fireworks show, the CV Fireworks is putting on their annual fireworks show this Friday. Hopefully, people will be there to support and celebrate the birth of our nation.
Thank you. And council member Azadrian.
I have no comment.
Council member Brotman.
No comments from me either, thanks.
I just have a few brief comments. Tomorrow night, if I'm not mistaken, is the start of our summer concert series. So, the first one is gonna be at Verdugo Park. So, Verdugo Park on Wednesdays, and then Brand Park on Fridays. The one at Verdugo Park, I believe, is 80s and 90s music. That's 1980s and 1990s for those millennials. So, it's a great opportunity. Bring a lawn chair, a blanket, great music, a great time to meet some neighbors and listen to some great music. The next item I have is Metro is going to be having a series of community meetings regarding the North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit. This project will add 22 new bus stations between North Hollywood and Pasadena and include transit that is faster and more reliable than regular bus service. So, there's several ways you can attend these meetings. One is by a virtual meeting next Thursday, July 10th, and you can go to our... I believe it's on our city website. Am I correct? It'll give you the information on how to log in. Metro wants to hear your thoughts on the subject and perhaps ask questions or have your questions answered. And then in person, the live meeting will be on Wednesday, July 16th. That's two weeks from tomorrow at 6 o'clock at the Adult Recreation Center. And there's free parking available at that location. And that's all I have. Mr. Galanian, anything from...
No, sir, thank you.
Mayor, I thought Mr. Brotman was gonna bring it up, so I didn't say anything, but I just wanted to say thank you to the Glendale Environmental Coalition for hosting the cleanup day last week. The item wasn't actually added to our calendar, so I learned about it again after, but I think it would be great for us to partner not just with Glendale Environmental Coalition, but look at some other community organizations to do this more often. I had mentioned during the last meeting that I'd like to see this be a community event, especially Public Works, and our Parks Departments are part of that. There should have been a flyer out. And just off the top of my head, I can think of like the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and even organizations like the Armenian Youth Federation, who used to do cleanups in Little Armenia, could take part in helping in this. And I think it's just an all-around good feel project that I'd love for us to be a part of and disseminate for other community members to join.
Mr. Mayor, just somebody from the public is from the Environmental Coalition, wanted to call in and give an update. I don't know. She says that the lines are not working, so I want to make sure that they have an opportunity to share with us what happened, how the event went, et cetera.
We're checking downstairs. If it's regarding a specific agenda item, they should be able to get through, but would you like them to get online at the moment?
Well, this would be for the community event.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Section.
I just got a text.
So, let's start with the next item, and we'll take those who are present first.
Next are community event announcements. Three minutes, five speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communication, subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda.
Thank you.
The first public comment is by Tony Passarella. You have three minutes.
Abajian, could you please start the slideshow? I have seven slides, people.
Yeah, it's Dr. Abajian. Thank you.
Couple of these followers you're gonna see here's... Oh, boy. Couple of stories. Robert Mallon from Brooklyn, New York fractured his skull because his bike failed. So much for shared mobility, abuse of shared mobility. Karen's first ride on a knee scooter ended with skull fractures in 10 places. Brain bleed, broke both sides of her jaw. Council members, look at the screen. Don't blink, don't flinch. Face it, Mr. Brotman. This is what happens when policy ignores reality, when the fantasy of sustainable mobility collides with unforgiving concrete. These are not stock photos, Mr. Brotman. You're not looking. Mr. Kasakian, you're not looking either. These are sons, daughters, parents. This is the real cost of shared mobility. Let me be clear. Glendale has no protected bike lanes. We have cracked sidewalks, puddles, chaotic intersections, and some of the most aggressive speeding drivers in Southern California. And into this you want to dump hundreds of e-scooters and e-bikes? Unprotected, regulations won't work. I see it every Saturday in Santa Monica. It doesn't work. Between 2020 and 2024, 233 people died as a result of riding on e-scooters and e-bikes. Head trauma is the number-one injury. These are not exceptions. These are patterns. These are the rules in cities. I thought they could import shiny devices without safety nets. And let's talk about riders. Most e-bike riders and scooters riders in shared fleets don't wear helmets. Many are tourists or first-time users. Many are intoxicated or distracted. We've seen it. Riders weaving between cars and pedestrians. Scooters left abandoned in sidewalks, on ADA ramps, in parks, storefront doorsteps. Council members, are you going to roll the dice with human lives? Don't do it, not ever.
We ask thee for guidance and that we may be able to do thy will to the benefit of those who reside here in this city. And we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Please read the next item, ma'am.
Next are presentations and appointments. The only presentation is an announcement on July 8th. There will be no city council meeting, and the next regular council meeting and housing meeting will be on July 15, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to item four.
Item four are consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion and a second. Let's take roll call, please.
Council members.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Our city council and staff comments.
I'll start with Mr. Carpetian. Come around the...
Just a couple of quick events that I attended. Glendale Latino Association's annual scholarship breakfast meeting. It was another successful meeting that organized by GLA, and they raise funds to provide scholarship to great students and help them in their future. Congratulations. Also, I attended Sir Optimist International's Dare to Dream installation luncheon. They're one of the largest international organizations that raise funds to help women and young ladies in their lives, in their future. For any kind of need they have, they support them. And I attend every year, and it's always packed, always packed. I had friends who wanted to attend. I called the city and said, "We need tickets. Sorry, we're sold out." And that's a good thing. So, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian.
Want to wish everyone a very safe and happy July 4th holiday. Remind folks that not only is it illegal to set off your own fireworks, but you also may pose a danger to your neighbors and yourself in terms of a fire potentially, or worse, you know, it could be physical harm. We've seen some and read about terrible accidents. If you want to enjoy a safe fireworks show, the CV fireworks is putting on their annual fireworks show this Friday. Hopefully, people will be there to support and celebrate the birth of our nation.
Thank you. And Councilmember Asadurian.
I have no comment.
Councilmember Brotman.
No comments from me either. Thanks.
I just have a few brief comments. Tomorrow night, if I'm not mistaken, is the start of our summer concert series. So, the first one is going to be at Verdugo Park. So, Verdugo Park on Wednesdays, and then Brand Park on Fridays. The one at Verdugo Park, I believe, is 80s and 90s music. That's 1980s and 1990s for those millennials. So, it's a great opportunity. Bring a lawn chair, a blanket, great music, a great time to meet some neighbors and listen to some great music. The next item I have is Metro is going to be having a series of community meetings regarding the North Hollywood to Pasadena bus rapid transit. This project will add 22 new bus stations between North Hollywood and Pasadena and include transit that is faster and more reliable than regular bus service. So, there's several ways you can attend these meetings. One is by a virtual meeting next Thursday, July 10th, and you can go to our, I believe it's on our city website. Am I correct? It'll give you the information on how to log in. Metro wants to hear your thoughts on the subject and perhaps ask questions or have your questions answered. And then in person, the live meeting will be on Wednesday, July 16th. That's two weeks from tomorrow at 6:00 at the Adult Recreation Center. And there's free parking available at that location. And that's all I have. Mr. Galanian, anything from?
No, sir. Thank you.
I thought Mr. Brotman was going to bring it up, so I didn't say anything, but I just wanted to say thank you to the Glendale Environmental Coalition for hosting the cleanup day last week. The item wasn't actually added to our calendar, so I learned about it again after, but I think it would be great for us to partner, not just with Glendale Environmental Coalition, but look at some other community organizations to do this more often. I had mentioned during the last meeting that I'd like to see this be a community event, especially Public Works, and our Parks Departments are part of that. There should have been a flyer out. And just off the top of my head, I can think of like the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and even organizations like the Armenian Youth Federation, who used to do cleanups in Little Armenia, could take part in helping in this. And I think it's just an all-around good feel project that I'd love for us to be a part of and disseminate for other community members to join.
Mr. Mayor, just...
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
Somebody from the public is from the Environmental Coalition, wanted to call in and give an update. I don't know. She says that the lines are not working, so I want to make sure that they have an opportunity to share with us what happened, how the event went, et cetera.
We're checking downstairs. If it's regarding a specific agenda item, they should be able to get through, but would you like them to get online at the moment?
Well, this would be for the community event.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
...section.
Okay. I just got a text.
So, let's start with the next item, and we'll take those who are present first.
Next are community event announcements. Three minutes, five speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communication subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda.
Thank you.
The first public comment is by Tony Passarella. You have three minutes.
Abajian, could you please start the slideshow? I have seven slides, people.
Yeah, it's Dr. Abajian. Thank you.
Couple of these followers you're going to see. Here's a, oh, boy. Couple of stories. Robert Mallon from Brooklyn, New York fractured his skull because his bike failed. So much for shared mobility, abuse of shared mobility. Karen's first ride on a knee scooter ended with skull fractures in 10 places. Brain bleed, broke both sides of her jaw. Council members, look at the screen. Don't blink. Don't flinch. Face it, Mr. Brotman. This is what happens when policy ignores reality, when the fantasy of sustainable mobility collides with unforgiving concrete. These are not stock photos, Mr. Brotman. You're not looking. Mr. Sasakian, you're not looking either. These are sons, daughters, parents. This is the real cost of shared mobility. Let me be clear. Glendale has no protected bike lanes. We have cracked sidewalks, puddles, chaotic intersections, and some of the most aggressive speeding drivers in Southern California. And into this, you want to dump hundreds of e-scooters and e-bikes? Unprotected, regulations won't work. I see it every Saturday in Santa Monica. It doesn't work. Between 2020 and 2024, 233 people died as a result of riding on e-scooters and e-bikes. Head trauma is the number-one injury. These are not exceptions. These are patterns. These are the rules in cities. I thought they could import shiny devices without safety nets. And let's talk about riders. Most e-bike riders and scooters riders in shared fleets don't wear helmets. Many are tourists or first-time users. Many are intoxicated or distracted. We've seen it. Riders weaving between cars and pedestrians. Scooters left abandoned in sidewalks, on ADA ramps, in parks, storefront doorsteps. Council members, are you going to roll the dice with human lives? Don't do it. Not ever. Not here, not in Glendale. Because let me ask you, if one of these photos you saw, Brotman never looked up, Sasakian never looked up, shame on you. If one of these photos was your child, would you still want, call it progress? Would you still say it's worth the risk? This isn't transportation solution, Mr. Brotman. It's a public safety crisis wrapped in tech startup branding. And if you approve this, the next tragedy, the next ambulance ride, the next funeral will have your fingerprints on it, Mr. Brotman. I'm asking you not to imagine. I'm showing you. I showed you what it looks like. Let that sink in.
Next public speaker is Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Glendale residents. My name is Mike Mohill. Council members, I don't think I've ever come before this council and discussed your Glendale community newsletter that came out today. It was entitled Glendale City's Impending Fiscal Catastrophe. The writer of this article is a man by the name of Edgeman Hagopian. He's in the room back here. He did the city of Glendale a big favor. He did an analysis of our finances. You know, I met this young man several months ago. He came up to me, and I asked him, "What's your background?" He said, "I'm in finance." I said, "Really? That's nice to know." Well, with that, about a month later, the city council is discussing the budget. I said, "You know what? I bet this young man can do an analysis of the budget." I said, "Edgeman, how about doing an analysis of our budget?" Because I read the Glendale news press, says nothing. Crescent Valley Weekly says nothing. Nobody's an expert here. Mumbo jung, but for most people in the viewing audience. So, I said, "Edgeman, can you write something in our newsletter? It goes out to thousands of people in our readership, and you can explain to them our finances." I said, "Don't make it too technical, because our readers are Joe the Plumber, you know, that the average person can understand." And wow, what a newsletter. Had nothing but compliments. And you know what's so nice about it? He didn't charge the city $25,000 as a consultant. He did it for free. Isn't that nice? And I hope those who say they don't get my newsletter, get a copy, you know, you get it from third parties anyway, and read it, please, because it tells you the truth in advertising. One thing, our city manager says something. Each one of our council people. And you know, by the way, you know what's very interesting about this newsletter? Nothing personal, nothing criticism. It's strictly factual. No cartoons, nothing like that. It was very fun. I even had a compliment from one person say, "Hey, Mike, what are the cartoons?" Hey, this is very serious. It's very factual, and it'll be easy for everybody to read. And if you don't get a copy, you can email me, mjmoill@gmail.com. Again, my email address is mjmoill@gmail.com. And here it is. Again, the title is Glendale City's Impending Fiscal Catastrophe. And let me tell you, ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, it's not good. Bye.
Next is Edgeman Hagopian.
Hello, council members. Thank you, Mike, for the introduction. My name is Edgeman Hagopian. First of all, I'm here to, I migrated to the United States. I lived in Middle East and Europe. The United States, with all of its problems, is the best country in the world. And I want to wish everyone safe, happy Fourth of July in advance. We are blessed to be in the United States. With that, I wanted to talk to you about the budget that we passed without going into too much detail. I wanted to, most of you agreed, almost all of you agreed that we have a revenue problem. Where I'm coming from is, I think the unmitigated version of the budget that you initially discussed, based on my assumptions, is more realistic over five-year overview. And based on that, the funds would, the exhaustion date would be sooner than what was in the budget that was passed with the mitigation strategies. So, I wanted to ask you to be more candid and be a little bit more forceful when it comes to discussing the revenues. You have all run for office. You have your base. You have your affiliations, and you all have your own ideas. But at the end of the day, when we have a fiscal five-year plan and budgetary issues, inevitably, it results in layoffs, cutting services, critical services, and that impacts all of us. So, I want to urge all of you to come together, put the revenue on top, to be a top priority for your agenda, and perhaps you can have a subcommittee. Some of us like to play music. Some of us enjoy reading budgets and work on Excel. And I'm sure there are a lot more members of the community that would be willing to come in, volunteer their time to help the city with the financials and ideas. At the end of the day, you are the elected officials. All of these are ideas, and you get to choose which way is the best path forward. But by bringing the community in, you might hear ideas and opportunities that wouldn't be otherwise available to you. Thank you.
Next is Dr. Jackie Yish.
Mayor Najarian, City Council. First of all, this part is just from me. It's not from any organization that I belong to. I want to voice my agreement with Glendale's decision to not ally ICE to use our jail. I was pleased that many of the people who spoke at council in the last few weeks agreed with this, too. I was saddened about the few at council who did not agree and seemed to believe that many immigrants are criminals. Being undocumented is not a criminal offense, but rather a civil offense. The vast majority, I've seen numbers more than 65%, of the people who have been arrested recently have no criminal records, and sources say that only 8% have been convicted of serious crimes. I have no problem deporting the serious criminals, which is what we were told the government would do rather than what is happening now. What is occurring now is masked and unidentified people rounding up random people who quote-unquote "look" like they might be undocumented. This is what countries like Nazi Germany and other autocratic countries have done. This is racist and inhumane and illegal without a warrant. Referring to the people they arrest as quote-unquote "bodies" rather than people takes away the humanity of the people arrested. Removing a father who is the main financial breadwinner, or removing a father who has three sons who are serving or have served in the military is terrible and accomplishes nothing positive. Many current undocumented immigrants work in hospitality, healthcare, childcare, agriculture, meatpacking, and construction. They clean homes, take care of gardens, and watch kids and elders. They contribute to Social Security and will be unlikely ever to benefit from it. Not only their lives, but our lives will be harder without each other. All of us here in this room are either immigrants ourselves or descended from immigrants not that many generations ago. I hope we can all think about these immigrants as real people, trying to make a better and safer life for themselves and their children as we or our ancestors did. They are not criminals. Please have compassion for these hard-working immigrants.
Thank you. And the final speaker is on air, Jennifer Pinkerton. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Najarian and council members. I'm calling to let you know about a Glendale Environmental Coalition-sponsored community event with which the city assisted. On Saturday, about 20 people met at City Hall and then picked up litter on surrounding streets for about three hours. Everyone returned with full bags, some multiple times. Cigarette butts happen to be the most common littered item. I'm not sure if most people know that these contain plastic, so they don't biodegrade. And I wonder if the city would consider adding more cigarette butt collection containers, possibly at bus stops, and maybe doing some outreach to shops that sell tobacco products. We found a lot of cigarette butts around tobacco shops in particular. I would like to thank the city staffers who assisted with this, Aneg Bluanukian, Daniel Hernandez, and Chris Peplo, and then especially Integrated Waste Management staff, Saladin Dean Minor, Anthony Luca, and Ricardo Falco. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is all.
I would like to surprise the fire chief and the acting police chief, Chief Brooks and Captain Jenks, to come forward. Mr. Kasakian did mention that those interested in fireworks should go to an organized show. But can you, both of you, in your respective expertise, discuss the fire risk as well as criminal penalties involved with the use of illegal fireworks in our community?
Sure. Mayor Najarian, members of council, city staff, obviously, we're in a time of very high fire risk across this entire city. I think if you look over the last week of the fire activity in Riverside alone, they burned over 6,000 acres with four different fires. That same risk applies to us here in Glendale. We're at a heightened sense of awareness of the potential for fire in our city. I'll reiterate what Councilmember Kasakian said. Watch a professional show. Leave it to the professionals. Stay away from the fireworks. Enjoy the time with your family. Enjoy the holiday. We'll be out in the community, engaging with the community. If we see fireworks, we'll confiscate them. We do that in partnership with the police department and make sure they're properly disposed of. But our encouragement is leave it to the professionals.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, echoing what the fire chief has said, fireworks are illegal in the city of Glendale. We have many great professional shows in the area. We encourage everyone to get out with their families, enjoy the Fourth, celebrate this great country, have barbecues, but please leave the fireworks locked up. And the police department, along with the fire department, will be out and enforcing illegal fireworks wherever we see them. And they are illegal, and we will take enforcement action if needed. But hopefully, we just wish everyone a very happy, safe, and sane Fourth.
Thank you, chiefs. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one note. I wanted to provide an advisement to the council and the public that the new rules regarding council meetings that were adopted by the council on June 3rd will be in effect as of July 3rd, so meaning the next regular council meeting on July 15th. Those rules will be in place. A slightly different change of order to what's on the council. They'll have two periods of oral communications. The first period where members of the public will be able to speak on agenda items or non-agenda items. The community event announcement portion will remain, but speakers will have to speak only on community event announcements. And then there'll be that second period of oral communication at the end of the meeting, which is again for non-agenda items. So, those will be some of the changes that'll be in store for July 15th.
Thank you. And we'll remind everyone.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be plenty of reminders.
As well as ourselves, because we also need to be...
Get it, chief.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam clerk, what's next?
Next are action items. The first action item is Fire Department Regarding Standardization of NOX Corporation Products. One resolution to dispense with competitive bidding to establish the NOX Corporation as the city's standard narcotics safe manufacturer and authorizing the Deputy Director of Finance purchasing to procure related software, hardware, parts, maintenance, and services.
Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Najarian, members of city council, I'm going to invite our newly-minted fire chief, Chief Brooks, to present this item for your consideration.
Chief.
It's a night. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mayor Najarian, members of the council, as Dr. Abajian read, we're looking to replace narcotics safes. Our narcotics are required by the DEA and DHS to have secure regulations in storage. The old vendor we had, those safes reached the end of their service life, and the manufacturer is no longer supporting the software in order for us to be in compliance. NOX is a safe that many of us are familiar with. In order for us to gain access to buildings throughout the city, it's called a NOX box that you often see on the side of the building. We have a special key to get into. This is a mobile variation that we put on our apparatus. We've tested them extensively over the last year on three different apparatus. They meet all DEA and DHS regulations, and so we're asking to standardize that as our normal product.
Thank you, chief. Are there any callers or speakers on this?
We have one public comment on this item. Beth Brooks.
This is the Fire Department. Safety boxes. Okay. We'll put her to 8B on that. That would be it?
That is all.
Yeah.
Second. Let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Asadurian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is Action Item B, City Attorney Regarding Review of Mayor Selection Policy Set forth in Glendale Municipal Code Section 2.04.020 and Discussion of Alternate Provisions Continued from 6/10/2025. One motion directing staff.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
I will pass it on to our city attorney.
Garcia.
Thank you. If you go to the next slide. Mr. Mayor, members of council, in March of 2024, the council directed our office to bring back alternative language in the mayor's election policy of Section 2.04.120 of the Glendale Municipal Code to address the following: A provision allowing council members who have not served as mayor to have precedence over those with more seniority. A provision revising or perhaps eliminating the prohibition on council members whose council term will end the same year as the mayor's term or whose council term will end 180 days after mayor's selection from serving as mayor. And options on tightening the best interest clause. Next slide, please. So, we have some options. We've put them in the report. I can go through them in as much detail as the council would like. We have, there were a couple of options as related to the seniority rule. They're basically the same. They're just worded differently. But in essence, they're doing exactly as I said, would provide council members who have not served as mayor the opportunity to have priority over council members who have served as mayor. And what is recommended is provided that the council member serve at least some portion of time. Could be as little as a year. It could be two years. It's up to the council. I note, the more years you make it, the more, there are less opportunities for that council member to serve during their first term. So, you may want to consider a lesser term or not have any year in there at all that a council member would have to serve. I would note, historically, our council members have served at least one or two years before being selected as mayor as a minimum. But again, there's no requirement. And certainly, some cities don't have that requirement at all. And I've seen cities appoint first-year, brand-new council members to the mayorship. I would note that this option one has to be slightly reworked, just to clarify that if new council members who are not eligible, then you would default to those with seniority. And then, so one question may be whether the council would desire to have this language written as guidance rather than as a rule, as we previously had before we adopted the most recent version of the ordinance. Next slide, please. So, again, the other, the option two is just stating the same thing, but just really in reverse. Again, providing, this would provide that the council member with the longest continuous uninterrupted service on council would have priority. But then, notwithstanding that provision, a council member who served one or two years or however many the council desires would have priority over those with more seniority. I would point out that also, this, when you have an election where perhaps two or more council members, new council members are seated, that raises the possibility that a council member with seniority then will be put further back at the back of the line. And so, I would note, as we've noted all along, there's no, no system can be perfect, and you'll have to, you have to be aware that there, as we've seen previously, there can be unintended consequences with moving around the order. Next slide, please. So, there was direction, at least to provide some draft language addressing this issue regarding essentially what we currently have, which is a prohibition on a council member being selected mayor in the year where they will essentially be up for reelection as a council member. So, the current provision prevents a council member from being selected mayor during the last year of the council term or when the council term is going to end 180 days after selection. So, one option is to delete this provision in its entirety. Another one is to modify it to make it inapplicable to council members. Another one is to modify it to make it inapplicable to council members who have never served as mayor, so that the provision wouldn't apply to them. And then regardless, it might be appropriate, as was discussed previously by council members, to prohibit a council member from deferring their selection if that would allow them to be council member, will allow the council member to be first in line during the last year of their term. In other words, to prevent a council member from using the defer, deferral process from getting an advantage in a subsequent election year. And then, next slide, please. Last, we have the best interest clause, which I know we're very familiar with. And again, this, this has been determined by the courts to grant broad discretion to the council to make a selection other than what's, what is the preferred order, order of seniority. The request back in March of last year was to give you some options on replacing this language. So one option is obviously to just remove it outright and not have that discretion. Another option is to replace it with objective criteria, and we've put them in the report, but essentially, rather than a broad discretionary exception, which the best interest clause currently is, it would have specific criteria for which the council would be able to not select the person next in line. Those would include unexcused absences in the prior year, a physical or mental capacity severely, severely limiting ability to perform duties, conviction of a felony or arrest or charge of felony, crime of violence, or moral perpetuity. And again, I would just note, even with this, these more objective criteria, they do not necessarily, they would not necessarily turn a mayor selection process into an administrative hearing. I think the court is likely to still view, as long as there's some evidence in the record for which the, a council can make an objective determination that one, one or more of these criteria are satisfied, a court would be unlikely to overturn a decision in this area. Next slide, please. So one of the other discussion points we have, we've had previously is currently, we, the mayor is selected in April. We have a March election date, and which, as we just occurred last year, we have a March election date, but the, the new council is not even sworn in until after the April mayor selection date. In addition, we obviously, we have a June election date, which, in both cases, both the March and April elections, you end up having a mayor selection where shortly thereafter, a new council member is often seated, one or more. And so there might be a question of whether or not to move that so that you have new council, new council members being able to participate in the selection of the, of the mayor. In addition, the current provision of subsection C, when there's a council member who, whose term is going to come upon the election year, it, it usually has the effect of precluding them from serving two years in a row. So at least by moving it to July, you, if, even if you didn't get rid of the other provision, this would at least eliminate one of those scenarios, not the first one, but the second one. So obviously, those are, those are some of the, the benefits of that provision. And then I would just point, put out for the council, it is a policy question whether to maintain this ordinance and, and weigh the certain, having some certainty in, in who the selection of the mayor will be versus the flexibility to take into account changed circumstances. You know, we've learned definitiveness in, in what is ultimately a political process is difficult to achieve, and I'm not, that's not, that's a, that's a statement that the judge made in our, in the case that we had. It is ultimately a political process, and it's a, political choices are made by council members in selecting who the mayor is. So, you know, to each of you, I'd, I would, I would suggest you answer, ask these, self these questions. If a fellow council member who's next in line to be mayor has done something that you feel is either embarrassing the council or the city, or in your opinion is not in the best interest of the city or the community, or if you feel it is in the city's best interest to pick another colleague for reasons having nothing to do with the colleague who's next in line, do you wish to retain the flexibility to choose another individual? And if so, is the best, best method to retain the best interest clause, to structure the ordinance so the rules of precedence are just guidelines and are not, cannot be construed by either court or the public as rules that have to be definitively followed in all circumstances? Or is the best policy outcome to get rid of the ordinance altogether? With that, I leave it to the council. I have, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do we have any callers or speakers on this?
Yes, we have several cards on this item. The first speaker is Mike Mohill.
That's what we say.
I just turned it in.
Oh, well.
My name is Mike Mohill. I just took some notes, comments about the processing. You know, certainly it's nice to know who the next mayor is going to be. Okay? You know, it used to be the person who was in, ran the housing authority got the experience of running a meeting, and then he became the next mayor.
Or she.
Or she, excuse me. But we've had the experience recently where a person forced herself forward and said, "I want to be the mayor because I don't have enough, I'm afraid that I will not be mayor within my first four years." That's a disaster. That's an embarrassment to the city and to the person. We should not have that happen again. We need a person who has about one or two years on council, knows how things run. We, you know, for example, you know, if there's going to be a hot subject matter, you don't want that, and you have a crowd of 20 people in the room, you don't want to have those people wait two hours to speak. You bring them to the front, change the, the order of the meeting. Now, an experienced mayor or council person would know that. Unfortunately, one of our previous mayors did not know that rule or that experience. This is not a on-the-job-training experience. I want someone to know what's going on. The, the fact that if, if a council member is going to be up for reelection next time, next round, that person should not, the old rule should not be, be the mayor, because he has the advantage over the other candidates. I'm looking for fairness. I'm not looking for, "I got you." You all were elected by the people, not by me, but by the people. Do what's right, but do what's honest. It's tough, it's political. But you know, you, you count to many people in the viewing audience, and we trust you for your judgment. Although the mayor is ceremonial position, you all have the one vote. But let that person be respected, for the last couple of mayors have had nothing but bad marks on them all. And this should not be. I've got 17 seconds. I give it to the next speaker.
You?
Next is Alan Durham.
Mayor Najarian, council members, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Alan Durham. The original selection ordinance was passed with the stated purpose of adding fairness and flexible, I'm sorry, predictability to the selection of mayor each year. And it was also stated that it would prevent council members in line for mayor from being passed over, which had sometimes happened in the past. Since the selection ordinance was adopted, these procedures have not been followed in the last two mayoral selections. If this ordinance is to remain in effect, the best interest clause should be totally eliminated. Again, eliminated, not simply modified, as suggested in the staff report. The best interest clause simply guts all other provisions in the ordinance. If the best interest clause is retained, there's no point in even having the ordinance. Just get rid of it. Simply go back to having the council select the mayor using any criteria they choose. The last two mayor selection processes were an embarrassment to the city of Glendale, and they gave critics of the city and the council the chance to claim that the selection of mayor was the result of political horse trading and backdoor dealing. I also urge the council, because I read the staff report and their suggestions for modifications to the current ordinance language, I urge the council to please be careful in considering making language changes to the current ordinance. I know one thing I saw caught my attention. It was a suggestion that it would be added to the mental or physical health, that that, you know, could disqualify someone from being mayor. And it was suggested that language be added that if a council member had a serious nervous breakdown, they wouldn't be eligible. I'm not quite sure how you distinguish between a serious nervous breakdown and a non-serious nervous breakdown. In addition, nervous breakdown is a layman's term. It has never been a clinical term. It has never been in the manual, diagnostic manual for mental disorders. So having additional language creep in, that's going to be problematic. You know, you need to be on guard for that. Thank you.
You?
Thank you. Next is Ramela Iragi.
Hi, council, mayor, public. Yeah, it's been a while. I haven't talked to this, to the council. Yeah, actually, last time I wanted to talk to, to the council, and I don't know what happened, just after three minutes of oral communication, you drop on the five minutes of oral communication, and without a notice, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that usually, the way the, the mayors, seeing that they connect this, the chamber, they usually do the last call when it comes to the, they make the last call for the submitted cards, so the audience, the public know, knows that, if, that that's a last chance that they can submit cards. They usually announce that. I've seen that in other council meetings. So, yeah, just put that aside. Yeah, it is one of the small things that the mayor can do. Other than that, I don't see what the mayors are doing here, except sitting in the middle and, I don't know, just moderating the, moderating the, the meetings. So, yeah, I couldn't care less who sits in the middle, how, how they, they're being elected, they're being, being selected. And I want the public to know that they usually, the system of the, government system of the, at least the city, is a council manager system. I still don't know what the mayor's doing here. All the ideas, agendas coming from the council, from the ma, from the major, and rarely I see that, I see agendas are being produced, being introduced by the council members. So, yeah, all of this, I guess, it's been injected by the manager to this council. And, yeah, the manager that's making a lot of money, a lot of money. And, yeah, last, last year, he makes like 30%, more. Yeah, so that, that's why I don't, still don't understand what the mayor is doing here. The system is a mayor, major, council system, and, well, let me know what is the significance role of the mayor here. Thank you.
Next is Beth Brooks.
Thank you. Yeah, Alan said it probably better than I possibly could. The best interest clause got you to, you know, steal the election twice. The first time was legal, because Alan was, was qualified, according to the ordinance, to be mayor, and, and it wasn't arbitrary and capricious, you know, so, so that was the lawsuit that was lost. The second time actually was not legal, and the only law firm who got back to me, because I did say I would mount a lawsuit, was Michelle and Associates in Long Beach, who actually wasn't able to sue Frank Crentero, you know, back in, I think it was 2014, because Kamala Harris was the attorney general and said, "No, we won't," you know, "take that lawsuit." They wanted $10,000 retainer, and, you know, I'm lucky if I have $10 retainer, so, you know. Because this was actually not, not legal, because you were not qualified, because you were, you were disqualified based upon this being your last year in office. But all that being said, exactly what Alan said, you don't want to go through this again, where people are saying, "You guys just take the best interest clause and make up anything you want and just put in anybody you want." You don't want that. You know, it's been two years, and you don't want that, you know, that, that to be on your heads, and we don't need that on our heads either. So I think that if you have, you should throw out the best interest clause, definitely, but you definitely need an ethics and, and health clause, I guess, for council members too. Right? I mean, what if you, if you get mentally sick or physically sick? I mean, you couldn't be a council member either. I don't know if that's in the charter, but that's what seems to be an issue. So that could be in the charter, that if you're sick, you don't get to be a council member, and ergo, you don't get to be a mayor. But the best interest clause is just getting everybody in trouble. I think that's just a nightmare. It just makes you look like there are backroom deals going on, which we know there are backroom deals going on, and that's, that's pretty bad. Regarding the, holding the mayorship for the next year, that's like, who gets a job and says, "You know what, boss? I think I'm not going to take this job this year, but please hold it for me in a year from now." This is not how people get jobs. So, I mean, if you're, everybody's a big boy and a big girl, and they're an adult, and they say, "I can't do it," that's it. Your chances is, is lost. You don't get to hold it for the next year. Nobody gets a job like that. No government official, no private entity, no consultant. You don't hold it for the next year. You take it, or unfortunately, you don't take it. So that should also be thrown out. The idea that your last year in office, you would have something up on the other city council members if you were going to run again, I think that's fine. I don't, I, I think you're giving more opportunities to be mayor. I mean, I know what happened two years ago, but she got an opportunity, and I think that that was good, to have an opportunity to be mayor. I do think it was stolen from you, but I also think it was good for her. So, I mean, there's good and bad, but I don't think you should limit that, because especially with these two limits, Mr. Karpetian doesn't get to be mayor at all. Because if you give it to Mr. Kosakian, because he did not take it this year, he gets it next year, and then the next year is Mr. Karpetian's last year in office, so he gets shut out. And I don't think that's okay. So I think that the, the do-over, or we're going to hold it for you the next year, has to be eliminated. The, the subsection H, which is the best interest clause, is just a minefield. It's a minefield that's going to make you look bad. And I think not being allowed to have it in the last year in office, I think that's fine, because it's not like the mayor does everything. It's not like, yes, we're going to vote for you next year in city council because you did so many great things. You all work as a body. I don't think one person would have an advantage over anybody else if they were mayor in, in the next term. So I think you should make it as transparent, objective, and fair as possible, or just eliminate, or just eliminate it. And then we could just have, you know, pick whoever you want. But I think it has to be objective, fair, and transparent, and this way, and with all the sugge, it's not, not at all. Thank you.
Next is Edmond Alkobion.
Hello. My name is Edmond Alkobion. All of you are, are elected, we don't, we don't have districts, and all of you have been elected by the entire resident population of Glendale. And in my opinion, that qualifies all of you to serve as a mayor. There's five of you, and there is a four-year term. My suggestion would be to reduce the term, so every person gets the chance to serve as a mayor in four years, within the four years, because when there's a limited, there's a limited time, and everyone wants to be a mayor, that, you're forced to create a criteria. And if that criteria is not objective and it's subjective, it creates conflict between the council members. The citizens, the residents of the Glendale make their decision when they appoint you to the seats, and we want our best interest to be your priority. And I appreciate the time for the comments. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Patrick Murphy.
Good evening, Mr. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. The resolution that was passed in 2020 did not, the language did not make it into the ordinance, some of the language. The housing authority chair in that resolution was supposed to be next in line for the mayor. That did not make it into the ordinance. In addition, the best interest clause was not in the resolution and made it into the ordinance. How that happened, who knows? Why not go back to the resolution that was passed in 2020 by several members of this council and put that ordinance in place? It worked. It worked for several years. The last two years, it didn't work because, well, we all know why. But put the resolution in place the way it's supposed to be. I don't know why the language changed. So, thank you.
No callers. That is all.
Okay, colleagues. Do we have any questions or would you like to discuss your views on this item?
And just for the councils on the screen, I just put up the, sort of the list of things that we would need direction on, assuming you want to go one way or the other.
I do have, I have one question for clarification.
Yes, Mr. Krasak.
Mr. Garcia, for, I, I am pretty adamant that someone not serve as mayor in the same year that they're running for reelection. But, you know, this question has been kicking around in my head. I've done my own research. I believe I've found an answer, but I want confirmation of it. Am I to understand that mayor is not a acceptable ballot designation for council elections because it is a selected title, not an elected title?
I believe that's the case, but I can't 100% say that. But I, I have a strong belief that is the, the correct answer. But I would need to research it to give you that, that's absolutely true.
It would be interesting for me to know because part of the advantages, like when people look at a ballot, what is next to a person's name? If you have three council members up for election or even two and one person has mayor after their name and the other person has council member, it, it does, you know, there have been studies that say that ballot designation accounts for a certain percentage bump in votes or advantage.
Comments?
If we can go to comments, I think, let me recognize Councilmember Asatirian.
I think with respect to the first clause, I'm just going to kind of give general thoughts on this. I would remove, my fight on this has always been that it shouldn't be about someone serving as mayor, but for me, it's longest serving since your last election. So no one, when they're electing anybody into office, no one's counting seniority as it pertains to serving as, as mayor. And it makes it easier and cleaner when you're saying longest serving since your last election, which opens up the door for anybody that's new or reelected. But to mark that previously served as mayor and then with the exception of if there is somebody new, it's kind of, the sentencing is built backwards. It would just be cleaner if you said, you longest serving since your last election. Because that takes care of the new person, it takes care of the seniority issue of since your last election, but it doesn't.
Oh, longest serving since your, since last elected to council. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
For the 180 days, you know, we've now had a case of someone announcing that they're retiring and I have no issue with if someone does announce that they're retiring. I know that previously there have been elected individuals who have said that they're not going to run and then they ended up running. And the one workaround on that could be that, you know, should that person change their mind and announce automatically the, the next week, the item's automatically on the agenda and the next person in line who's not up for reelection is, is appointed as the next mayor. It's, it's pretty simple to me. And I think some people would argue, well, they still had a little more time before that to call themselves mayor. I would argue, I think, one of my issues all along has been that all the council members have the same privileges and the same powers. The mayor in Glendale is supposed to be somebody that just runs the meetings and ceremonial, so just be a more active council member, whether you're up for reelection or you're not. And then most definitely, the will of the people and the number of votes plays a role in this for me. So I would want to make sure that. The best interest clause, for me, had a negative connotation to it. And I think some of the issues that we saw last year and I guess this year, just, I would want to reword that. But my larger issue is that if you have an exit clause, makes this a policy, no policy, as I've called it. And so if that, if we are going to have that exit and this is going to be the situation every time, I'd rather not have a policy at all. And then if we are looking at dates, I'd want to entertain a July selection date after the 2026 elections. I know that some folks had made comments I do want to address because I also signed an email that was sent to my colleagues. For anyone that thought that I would be able to serve this year, that wouldn't be the case as it was presented back then. It would have come on the third year, should I have chosen to run for a second term and gotten elected. And it wasn't something that I brought up last minute. It was addressed and, or brought to my attention right after I got elected and I raised it to my council colleagues time after time, you know, in, in, in two years. And so for those that think that you need to be on council in order to run, I'm not interested in setting years. You can hold other positions in your life that prepare you to run a meeting, from being on the commission to serving on another elected body or being an executive or part of an organization. So those are my main comments initially. And I do think that there was something about the housing authority chair and how these two aren't like information from that. If we are going to continue that, then it should be built into this.
Sure. If I, on that point, if I may, Councilmember Sotirian, so the way it's tied in together, we basically reversed the order of how they were tied in together. It used to be your housing authority chair, it used to be housing authority chair, then redevelopment, then mayor, then now it's housing authority chair. And so the way we do that is the, the mayor, the mayor is selected and then the housing authority chair selected subsequently based on who was, who's supposed to be the mayor the following year. So that's still, they're still connected, they're just connected differently than they previously were. And so what is, ends up happening is that, that practice is still in place, right? So whoever's supposed, whoever's the housing authority chair is supposed to be the mayor the following year, but that's not, it's not always going to be the case depending on the circumstances of who's selected.
Well, there should be some sort of reference to that, I think, in this, if we are going to look at keeping it and just making changes.
Okay, Mr. Brodmann.
Well, I'll be pretty quick. I think the ordinance was well-intentioned, but obviously has not worked. Maybe it's, and has made things worse, in fact. Maybe it's the national political climate that's seeped into the work we do here in Glendale regardless of that. I, at this point, I think the best thing we could do is just, just eliminate the mayor selection process ordinance altogether. That would be my, my position. I'm not interested in eliminating or watering down the best interest clause. And if that's the case, then I think the whole policy makes no sense. As for extending, for, for the mayor selection, I do think moving it to July makes sense. I'm indifferent to whether we do that now, we do that after the next election, but I think we should move it to, to July. That's really all I can say.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian?
Oh, do you have more to say?
No.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I don't know what we can do to this ordinance to make it better or improve it or even if you take it away completely. This disposition has become very political and that is the problem. No matter how, how many changes you make to this ordinance, if you're not part of the majority, you will be bypassed. You'll be skipped over. And that's the reality of it and that's what happened in the last two years. Before that, we had the same ordinance, but three years in a row, it worked. They just went one at a time and it worked. And for me, if you want to make modifications, July is better because after the June election, we can, we can, the new council can select the, the mayor. If you give up your term this, this year, I don't think you should be in line to be next, first next year. I think if you decide not to take that position, you shouldn't be taking someone else's turn next year. Seniority, I think it's a, it's a really a harsh word. Who's, who has seniority over others here? I, I don't think, I don't feel that I have seniority over any of my colleagues, although I served five years at one point and this is my second year here. Besides council, Mayor Najarian, I have more years over here on this dais, but it doesn't mean that I have seniority over everyone else. Or, you know, consecutive years serving, I don't think that's a, that's, that's not the right way of handling this situation. I think if you haven't been the mayor, you should be first in line to be the mayor the next year. If you, if your colleagues have been the mayor and you haven't been the mayor, you should be first in line to be the mayor. At the end of the day, you know, the majority rules. The majority will make the decision. We never had, you know, we had some issues in the past, but before this ordinance, we never had this mayor selection ordinance or, or process to be so harsh that divided the community into two and they were really against each other. And we had issues in the past, but it wasn't as severe as last, last two years. And I resent that. I don't, I'm not happy about it, to be honest with you. You know, this ordinance was placed in place or it was voted for to, you know, be more clear, no backdoor dealings, no horse trading, to have more clarity. It just didn't happen and it's very difficult to continue that way if you're not, if you don't get along, if you don't move along to get along, then, then it's going to be an issue. I think, again, for me, I wouldn't mind if we just cancel this ordinance altogether because no matter what, that's best interest clause, and that was a very, very insulting part of this ordinance, best interest clause, that someone would tell you that I don't think you are in the best interest of the city. Who are you to tell someone else who's in the best interest of the city? There is no such a thing. And people who use that, I, I think they are not in the best interest of the city. So I think those, those clauses are really, were put in there just to have control. And to me, I don't know, I have, I have notes written down, but I think at the end of the day, if you are, if you want to keep continuing on this, this line of being, everything being political from state politics to national politics here, I don't think those politics have any room in these chambers. This, this position is a non-political position and I hope we can continue being that way. For me, I'm okay with Mr. Brodmann's, Councilmember Brodmann's suggestion to just get rid of it. If you want to keep it, again, July is okay for me. If you pass, you cannot be the first in line next year. And if you haven't been the mayor, you should be the mayor. And what else is there, Mr. City Attorney? And last year, if you, I think the, the council can decide to let someone be the, the mayor in the last year of his or her term while they're running for, for, for reelection. I think that could be decided. But other than that, no matter what we do, it, it's just a majority rule. So that's how it's going to go. That's where I am.
Thank you.
So I, I just want one point of clarification. Councilmember Garpetian, you said you're okay with someone being, you don't think it matters whether someone's mayor last in the year of election or not?
I think, of course, it does make a difference because you're the face of the city, you're everywhere, you represent the city, you get on the, on the stage and you speak every time. You, you put yourself in a better position. I think the council can make that decision at that time to say, yes, it's fair this year or not. I don't know.
Fair enough.
You know, I, I don't know. We never had that or have we had that before, that someone said, I'm not running and they took the position and said, well, people came to me and they begged me to run and I have to run again. I don't know if we, I think we had that once before, but I don't remember when. But again, if people are going to reelect you, you will get reelected. If people don't want you, I don't care if you're the mayor or not. But again, that's something that council can decide on case by case basis.
Okay. Well, you know. Are you still going? No, I was just asking for clarification. I'll just, I'll, I'll try to keep it short. I think that, you know, when it comes to the public's questions about what was intent, I tried to articulate that earlier this week and I, I posted something that I think maybe some folks read, others did not, explaining what my rationale or where I was coming from. And again, everyone's entitled to either agree or disagree with my comments, but they were coming from a place, from the same place that gave impetus for me to bring this issue up when I did, after getting elected to council, having sat in these chambers and having seen certain individuals get passed over, trying to find a way where we could make the process more predictable, but also fair. And I believe that two interests or desires to have those outcomes were where we ran into some conflict because of circumstances that were unforeseen at the time or perhaps foreseen, but did not believe that they would actually come to a head, that perhaps cooler heads would prevail, maybe someone would defer and allow someone else. So to be clear, and I think it was one of the speakers who said that, well, there was good and there was bad. And, and I, I agree with that term, with that kind of phrasing wholeheartedly because we did, I believe it is good when someone who has not, who's been elected by the voters and who has not or will not have an opportunity otherwise by our own attempt at coming up with fair rules is going to be passed over and we give that person an opportunity to be mayor. So I think if we can come up with something that says that when someone would otherwise not have an opportunity to be mayor, who has not served as mayor before, we allow for that. At the same time, I think one of the other issues in the subsequent year that caused a little bit of const, has caused a lot of consternation among some, but I believe it is fair as when we said that you can't be mayor in the year that you're running for reelection. It's critical because of that advantage that that person has, the visibility, it is almost free publicity in an era where Supreme Court has equated money with speech and we see how campaigns are run, how difficult it is. I, I'm one of the people up here that has strongly advocated for publicly funded campaigns to give those people that may not have the means to, to launch a campaign, to challenge ideas, those opportunities and. those opportunities, and maybe in the future, we're going to revisit that, I would hope. I think that what trumps all of that is if someone then says, you know, I'm not going to run for reelection, because then that person is no longer challenging or having advantage over others. I don't know how you require that person to make their statement binding. I don't believe there's a legal way, but I would like to see if that were to happen in the near future or in the distant future, that whoever makes that declaration, sign or submit a declaration of that fact to be filed with the city clerk and with the city attorney. I have mentioned to some of the staff and my colleagues at various times that when we run for office, there is a form that I believe every candidate is given to sign that says, you know, you pledged to run a clean and fair campaign. That is not binding. A person can sign that, and a candidate can then turn around and run as vicious of a campaign as they want against the other opponents. But at least you have that person on the record, you have something that the public can point to and say, you are going against what you signed and filed publicly to the residents and voters of Glendale. I think that should hold some value, it should be held to some, it is a standard. In terms of moving to July, I don't, I'm not entirely against it, but we do have elections that shift, and who comes on when. We have some elections that are in March, because our elections are coinciding with the primaries, it may or may not affect it. I don't think it should, so I want to say initially I would be leaning towards that, but I do have to think it through, because again, what got us here was wanting to do the right thing and not anticipating what the consequences could potentially be. And lastly, I do still believe, whether we call it seniority or longest serving, there are two things that I think should have some value. Look, personally, I would say, I've been an advocate of expanding the council, bringing more voices up here, allowing for the people to elect a mayor directly. I think these are all things that if they don't happen in my lifetime, I think at some point in Glendale, they're going to happen. We see other cities that have moved towards that type of model. Our neighboring city of Pasadena has a much, is a much smaller city, and has a larger council by district and has an elected mayor. There's no reason why the voters of Glendale should deserve less. But, you know, it's very hard to change when you're accustomed to doing certain things in a certain way, and I understand that as well. But ultimately, I think the voice of the people matters for something, and I think, you know, number of votes should matter, as well as the amount of time someone has served. What was particularly unique in this last case, in the year that when we voted to make Councilmember Osatryan mayor, is that we have a unicorn-type councilperson, Councilmember Najarian has served, I don't know if there's any councilmember who's served as long as you have in office, and so that gave him super seniority. I don't know if you will ever have that again, because I think you're the only councilperson here, perhaps maybe Carpet, Councilmember Carpetian as well, who was elected pre-term limits, if I'm not mistaken.
I was elected pre-term limits.
Yeah, so I think that, that was what created that scenario, although I've, I've thought about this, I've tried to figure it out in my head as to how it would happen if candidate A, B, and C are elected, but candidate A is an incumbent running for reelection, and candidates B and C are absolutely new, how that configures, it does get complicated. There's, there's going to be certain scenarios within three years of, three terms if someone continues to get reelected, where they may be unable to serve as mayor during one of those terms, but I will say that I believe everyone, at least as best we can, in their first term, should be given the opportunity to serve. Now, how we do that, I'm still trying to figure out, but that's, those are, that is my stream of consciousness and thought on how we approach this. I also see that there are some folks who are willing to do away with this entirely. I don't know if that's the most prudent way forward, but given some of the feelings and emotions, I understand why. I do absolutely understand Councilmember Carpetian, Councilmember Najarian, that the best interest clause can be taken very personally. It could be something that weighs heavy if your colleagues use that as a reason for not supporting your appointment, but again, there are other factors as well, not running for reelection prior to your serving the one last allowable term, if you're reelected, as well as someone in their first term who's never been mayor, being entirely skipped over, over someone who hasn't had an opportunity to serve as mayor multiple times, mind you, right? To your credit for getting reelected and being appointed. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. I, I do agree that when we discussed this rule back in 2020, we were only with the best interests in mind of fairness and predictability and easily determinable accession to the mayor's seat. And I think the best interest slipped by me when it came up. I know it wasn't, as Mr. Murphy said, it wasn't in our resolution that we gave to the city attorney, but nonetheless, it was before us when we made that vote. I challenged essentially the, the best interest determination by this council in my lawsuit against the city, and the judge was pretty clear in that the selection of the mayor was a legislative act, and that there was no reasons that were required to be given in the best interest. I think you could read the judge's opinion, and the beauty of this is it was specifically tailored to the city of Glendale. We don't have to look to other cities and other cases. The judge and his clerk and the attorneys focused directly on the language of this. I think there's some language in the judge's ruling that even if the best interest clause is not there, that the council still has discretion to select who they want to, because it is a legislative act. That could be argued, but in my reading of it, and the judge's broad classification of the mayor selection as a political decision, he seemed to have no problem with there being backdoor deals in selecting mayor. In fact, he said it should be expected, it should be expected in the political process of selecting a mayor, that there are backdoor deals or communications or agreements or whatever, and it's in the opinion, if you want to read that. I think if we try and be specific about the, the role as to who would be mayor, we're just going to run into problems. There's always going to be something that pops up, that someone who believes that he or she should be the next mayor is passed over, and it's gonna, it's that expectation of being the mayor that creates the bitterness when they are not selected mayor. I think the best thing to do, as Mr. Broadman said, is let's just can the ordinance, forget the seniority rule, let councilmembers decide if they're going to trust a councilmember who could or could not be selected mayor in his or her final term, whether they're going to ask from that person a declaration, be placed under oath, or whatever, let council decide whether it is their decision and desire to put that person there. Let all councilmembers strive during their term to maintain good relationships with their colleagues. If I know I'm going to be mayor, come hell or high water, in two years, let's say, I'm not going to have to be, make friends or make nice with Mr. Broadman or Mr. Kasakian, damn it, I'm going to be mayor, and, and to hell with everyone else. I think that does breed division in the council. And if council, in the selection of a mayor without any guidelines, believes that it's appropriate for someone who hasn't been mayor to be mayor in his or her term, whether it's the fourth year or any other year, so be it. Let council make that decision, using the elements of fairness and equity and whatever principles you'd like to throw into it. And that's, that's kind of where I am. So let's just go back to where we were. No one's guaranteed a seat. Use your best efforts to cultivate good relationships with your colleagues, prove to the public that you would be a good mayor, running the meeting, making your speeches or your appearances, or setting the agenda, and all the other things that a mayor does, and, and let it go from there. Changing the selection date, I'm kind of neutral on that. The only advantage of having it where it is now is that the person or persons voting for mayor, selecting the mayor, would have experience with the candidate who is going to be mayor, as opposed to someone who's just elected, let's say in a June election, they get sworn in, and then all of a sudden, there's someone put before them as mayor. They really may not have the full flavor of that person's ability and capabilities to be mayor. But I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not that, you know, that's not a hill that I would die on. And that's, that's where I am on this. Mr. Carpet?
I think on that July issue, it's not just because if you have newly elected councilmember, a week later, they have to, a month later, they have to sit here and, and vote on a $1.2 billion budget. So I think if they are elected, they will be capable of selecting the right person as the mayor. But the other issue is, if we keep it the way it is, one person will be the mayor for 15 months, the other one will be the mayor for nine months. So it's, it's a long stretch, and I don't think that's fair. So I, I'm more inclined to go towards July election, maybe end of, end of July mayor selection process than keeping it the way it is.
Mr. Garcia, did you have a comment on that?
Well, I was just going to suggest if, if you make the change effective July 2026 as an option, then every subsequent mayor will serve one year, you go from July to July, so that's, I think, I'm not sure if that's what you were suggesting, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
Councilmember Osatryan, then, Mr.?
I was just going to say that pretty much most of the cities that have, that were doing their own elections, then merged with the county, did switch over their selection date, and it ended up being that at least one councilmember either had a shorter term or they had a longer term, and it was decided by the council who that person is. And the only reason that I did say that this goes into effect after July 2026 is because I do think that us, like, closing out, recognizing also that Councilmember Najarian will not be seeking reelection, that you basically close out, and who knows what happens with the, with the seats, but you know at least one councilmember that is no longer seeking reelection, for it to start anew, and for this to be in effect at whatever we end up deciding after the '26 election.
Mr. Kasakian?
So it would be moving it from the April to July. I mean, that doesn't, I guess, matter to me as much. Those things are, I think, appropriate, depending on when the elections are, and if we have elections that are in June, fine. We do, we should remember that the county clerk's office does at times take up to eight weeks, I believe, to certify election results, so that's something to be aware of. And, you know, the closer, as close as our elections have been in our country, and with the like, the way elections are conducted, and votes are tallied in LA County, one of the largest jurisdictions, read somewhere once that elections in LA County are larger than, I think, like, 20 other states, whole states in the union. It could be a while. That's the only reason why I need to think and mull that over. And then my understanding or my sense is that I don't think there's interest on the dais to potentially shorten the mayor to. I, when talking to folks, and when I was speaking to a few other councilmembers, someone said that, well, now, Hambra, one of the solutions to this whole issue of who gets to be mayor when, is that they made the mayor's term nine months for everyone. So every nine months, they select a new mayor, and that kind of addresses the issue of everyone getting to be mayor. But I don't know if there is any interest to consider that. Is there?
That was the Verajaga Janian option, and we laughed at him when he, there may be, there may have been some wisdom back then in that. Mr. Carpet?
Yeah, I, I think the problem with that is sometimes you're close to your reelection, and then it's your turn to be the mayor, and the nine months ends, for example, in February, it's your turn to be the mayor, and then in June or July, you're running, in June, or either in March or June, you're running for reelection. I don't know how it could be, there's something that has to be looked into, but I think if it's from July to July, it's, it's okay. If not, we can look into it. I don't know, I don't have a solid answer about that. If that would make the process more transparent and fair, and it's like automatic rotation, I'm, I'm all for it to look into it. If it's going to make it, again, you have to select who's going to be the next mayor for nine months, it's the same process anyways, so keep it one year.
Question.
Do you mind if I go to councilmen?
So prior to this ordinance, folks brought their families, but there was no ordinance, there was no list of who was going to be next, right? And with all due respect, Mayor, you know, when you didn't get the mayorship, part of your comments during that time was, well, you know, why was her family here? But families were here many years prior to this ordinance being in place. So I'm trying to understand what that process was like, where everyone knew, I, I for one, as a member of the public, many times came to these chambers to celebrate our next mayor, knowing who that next mayor was going to be. So how was that announced?
Well, there was the, the great mayor selection of 2009, where.
2008?
2008.
Was that the one where there were votes and votes, and no one was getting?
This was the Draymond Little Red Wagon, and we were tied.
Only one time, though, it's not.
Well, I'm just saying, there have been instances where it's been a complete.
I can, I can answer that, if I may.
Would it, so I think one of the things that I do like, that I, I see other cities do, is like the announcement that next, you know, the next meeting, the, this person is going to be mayor, and it is something that is celebrated within the community. I see it be done by other cities. I think it removes that guesswork from it, but I'm just trying to understand, when we didn't have an ordinance, how, you know, how were these things?
I, I can't answer that, because I was part of the process for at least five years. First of all, the, the, the political atmosphere was different. We did not bring our personal political views to this dais. I'm being very honest with, with the entire community. When I wanted to become the mayor, it was my third year, I believe. I went to one of my colleagues, I said, look, this is what I would like to do, would you support me? He said, yes. And then I went to my other colleague, without breaking, without violating the Brown Act, I said, would you support me if I want to be the mayor? Yes. And then it was just known who's going, and the same thing happened here, I mean, right? I mean, people talked to each other, like, in my case, when I came here, I didn't know that he's already selected. But it was, that's why you knew that you have the votes to become the mayor, you asked your family to show up, and they, it was a happy occasion. You didn't break the, you know, violate the Brown Act, but you, you knew, everybody knew. And, and we were fair to people who were not the mayor, we didn't want to jump in front of them and say, no, I have seniority over you, and I have to be the mayor. So whoever was not the mayor, we had the courtesy to let that person be the mayor. Bottom line. It was very, it was not very simple, but it was much simpler than what we do today. This ordinance has really make it, made it much more difficult. It had, it was, the intention was right, but, but you, you would go to your colleagues and say, would you support me or not? And if they said, no, I'm not going to vote for you, you would step aside, but.
No, I mean, Mr. Carpet, in the Brown Act, doesn't allow for you to, so as an example, if we're having a frank discussion, you and I met prior to this election, but I said, I can't give you my opinion or state anything, because I've already had a conversation with another colleague. That's, I mean, that is, that is the Brown Act, like, I can't.
Oh, no, no, that's. I think there was a loose, a loose understanding that there would be a. I think there was a loose, a loose understanding that there would be a sequence of selection of the mayor, which adhered loosely, not entirely, to the seniority. There have been times when council members were passed over, for whatever reason. I think mainly it was not having the, the support and the confidence of the other members of the council. But are we ready for a motion here?
Yeah, one, one more thing I would just add, because I have, again, I think everyone, especially some of our, our diehard council attendees who are here with us tonight, thanks for being here, and always being here, they have seen and witnessed, and we've all witnessed, what happens when families come, supporters come, and there's this expectation for there to be this celebratory event. And yet, at the times when there has been lack of predictability, or maybe people think there's too much predictability, whatever the case may be, and there's bad emotions, I personally don't feel comfortable that when we're doing this selection, and like, the instance where the vote kept going and going and going, the Little Red Wagon vote, that there's this expectation that there's supposed to be a celebration that evening. Other cities also make their selections, they make their decisions, and then, you know, the mayor swearing in can be a separate ceremony where family and community members can attend. Once it's settled, you do it in the police community room, and that way, the, the politics doesn't play out in front of the public in the chambers, as we've seen happen. And I think that's one solution to it. I personally have tried to spare my family from coming here for mayor selections for a myriad of reasons, tried to spare them from a lot that the city and some of our more opinionated members try to subject us to. But I understand that, you know, the mayor selection has been a whole different animal. I would be of the mindset of that. Again, that can't be codified, it can't be written in an ordinance, but that would be my recommendation and suggestion.
I think that's a good idea. So we're here to give direction, correct? There's no ordinance to vote on at this point.
That's correct.
You're going to go back, you're going to, whatever we direct you to do, you'll be preparing an ordinance.
Correct.
Or not preparing an ordinance, depending on what we, what we say. And we certainly will have a chance to discuss it again if we come up with a better idea that hasn't been elicited at this point. So would someone like to make a motion? One way or the other?
Well, there is no, we're just giving direction, there is no motion, right?
Well, we would like some direction and a motion, or I can restate what I heard, and we can just go, we can, that can be the direction.
Three, like, at least three votes for?
Sure. So I would just start off with, I think I heard three council members supporting repealing the, the ordinance for all practical purposes, other than bringing back potentially an amendment that would change the selection date to July, with, and it would give you some options on whether that would be, the next mayor selection would be in July of next year, or if it would be in April of next year, and then have another one in July, or give you the options on how that would work, and council can make that decision. So that's, that's what I heard, so if that's, I can certainly bring.
An adjustment, I think we're all okay with an adjustment of the actual seating of the mayor, rather than, as Mr. Kasakian said, perhaps have it at the following meeting, where the, the votes have all been done, and you know who's going to be mayor, and your family or friends can come in. Can we do that, or is that in the charter?
You mean, the council would, would select the mayor one meeting, and then?
To be effective the next.
To be effective the next meeting, so, okay. We certainly do that.
I think we're okay with that, right? Who's ever?
Yeah, so instead of.
Gets to be mayor would.
The families will come after yours.
No, there's no.
The mayor changeover wouldn't occur until a subsequent meeting?
Yes.
We can do that. And then, I think that was, oh, one thing about, so if I, if we do bring back the ordinance to basically repeal the preference system, the prior ordinance, what it did say was, you know, "Council shall select a mayor, shall give consideration to council members who have had experience of at least a year on council." Do you want that in there? Again, it's not a rule, it's not, it's just.
Don't add any rules.
Okay. All right. Just be silent.
I am very adamant about the concept of somebody having served as mayor previously, being in the language, if we are going to pass an ordinance, it should just be since your last election.
Sure, but it sounds like the council's giving direction to.
If we're saying there's no rule.
There's no rule.
Then that doesn't even come into effect.
That doesn't, okay. Do we want to do anything about the number of votes someone gets?
Again, don't, no rules.
Okay.
Previously, we had those rules as tiebreakers, but if you're going to get rid of the rule, the recommendation would be not to have any sort of subrules.
I'm going to throw something else out that's not on here.
I was going to make the motion.
Most, a lot of other cities also just have a vice mayor. I know we have this rotating mayor, Pro Tem.
The Pro Tem is in the charter, I think. I don't think we have a.
I believe it is.
I think it is.
We have the Pro Tem.
Okay.
If you make that motion, I'll second it.
He did make it.
Okay, I'll make the motion, based on our city attorney's summary of our discussion.
Essentially repeal the ordinance, but bring back options on changing the selection date and the, and the seating of the new mayor.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadarian?
I'm going to abstain.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
I'm torn between abstaining or voting yes on this. I do want to try and give this one more chance.
This is just direction.
I'll, I'll vote yes, but I, I want my colleagues to give me at least an opportunity to see if we can find a good model to this, and with the caveat that I do think Glendale should have elected mayors and an expanded council. So yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. I'd like to thank council for a very thoughtful and analytical, sensitive discussion of this issue, which has torn the community apart for a few years.
I just hope that this is not going to be one of those decisions that we made, or ordinances that we passed, and we come back three weeks later, and there is another dealing going on, and come back three weeks later, and say, "I changed my mind, I want to bring it back and discuss that, this whole thing again." I think we made a decision, let's move on, let's give it a chance until next mayor selection, see how does it work, before having, we had discussed this thing to death, if you will. And I, I, I hope that this is not, is not going to come back under, anyways, I, I said what I had to say.
We may have a unicorn of an idea that pops up, so, no one's foreclosed, but I think it is good to bring some closure to this and to move forward.
Mayor, I'd request.
Yes, I.
Excused.
With, with due cause, Councilmember Asaturn, you are excused.
Thank you.
And we still have a quorum? You're okay.
New business next?
No. Is new business next?
Oral communication, right?
Or it's oral communication?
I can, I can.
Oral communication.
What's next, Madam Clerk?
Next is oral communication.
Oral communication.
I think I've known it for over 20 years.
Would you like me to proceed? Oral communications discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have three, actually, five speaker cards. The first speaker is Susan O'Carroll.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to ask that you individually and collectively as a city formally oppose SB 79. SB 79 recently passed the Senate and is now before the Assembly. I'm asking that you contact Glendale's Assembly members and applicable Assembly committees to express Glendale's and your personal opposition to this bill. SB 79 would massively upzone the city and remove local land use control. Under SB 79, developers could by right develop apartment buildings of up to 65 feet in height and 100 units per acre within a quarter mile of a BRT station, and up to 55 feet in height and 80 units per acre within a half mile on any residential mixed-use or commercial property. Glendale defines this as very high-density residential development. Out of Glendale's 9,501-acre zoned residential, currently only 11 acres are zoned for this very high-density of development. If you look at the maps I've provided, you will see that SB 79, in combination with the BRT, would upzone a one-mile strip of land across the city. This is a massive change. Needed opposition to SB 9 should be considered a priority. This bill will have a devastating effect on neighborhoods along the BRT alignment by allowing developers to drop five- and six-story apartment complexes with no parking or rent control randomly into single-family and low- and moderate-density neighborhoods within half-mile of BRT stations. For example, under SB 79, the BRT stations at Glenox and Western and Glen Oaks and Grandview could trigger this type of densification, and thus the destruction of Kenneth Village. SB 79 will destroy neighborhoods and make ownership of existing homes and condos unaffordable to all but developers by raising land value and thus existing housing prices through upzoning. SB 79 does nothing to address housing affordability, since the new apartments will not be subject to rent control because they're new construction, and SB 79 has no affordability requirements. SB 79 will also make affected neighborhoods largely undesirable to the families that make Glendale a community. Glendale has prepared a housing element which already accommodates the state's projected need for housing. SB 79's provisions would override Glendale's carefully-developed general plan and zoning ordinances and lead to the development that is inconsistent with the community's vision, will strain existing infrastructure, such as water, sewer, and transportation, and negatively impact neighborhood character and quality of life. It also sets the BRT up to be the agent of neighborhood destruction, and thus potentially the subject of community backlash when people realize that it's the trigger for increased densification. SB 79 represents a significant overreach of state authority into matters traditionally and most effectively managed at the local level. Glendale, like all California cities, possesses a unique character, distinct need, and deep understanding of its community's priorities. This bill threatens to diminish the City Council's ability to make decisions that are in the best interest of Glendale residents, instead imposing a one-size-fits-all approach that fails to account for local nuance. Preserving local control is essential for responsive and effective governance, allowing Glendale to adopt policies to its specific demographic, infrastructure, and economic realities. It's vitally important that you oppose this legislation. It's my sincere hope that Glendale and Assemblymember Schultz and Colloso will join Burbank, Pasadena, the Los Angeles City Attorney, the League of California Cities, and so many other cities and communities in formally opposing SB 79. Thank you for your time.
May I make a quick comment?
Yes, Mr.
Any questions?
I believe we have formally opposed SB 79.
You weren't listed in the Senate analysis as formally opposing SB 79. Burbank had the same problem. They sent a letter to the author of the bill, Scott Weiner, and they were also not listed as opposing the bill in the analysis. So if you have sent a letter, you may want to check on that and make sure that you're on the record in opposition.
Thank you.
We'll do that, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Any other questions, or, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Beth Brooks.
Yeah, I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands now, because I'm going to talk about the, there's like an underbelly of hate in this, in this city, and there are hate groups in this city, and I don't know how much you know about that. There definitely is the one called the Glendale Extremist Network that is obsessed with Mr. Najarian, and their latest post is that he hates black people. So, but the reason I'm concerned about this group, and the person who's running it, who, the evidence that I've seen, his name is Sean Jaltarossian, and I'm not on the website yet, but I'm sure I, I will be on the website soon. This group is actually stalking private citizens, posting their faces, where they work, if they have children, their cars, telling people not to go to their businesses, they're calling them Nazis, religious extremists, agitators, violent, dangerous, I mean, it's something sick. I know that the police has a hate crime division, so it's not rising to the level of a hate crime, but it is a hate group. And I don't know what you can do about this necessarily, they're not the only one. There's also, there's also a group, but they're focused on students. I don't know who runs that. I, I believe that the person is an artist, and I believe that because their posts are very artistic, and they have access to PTA emails, because they post people's emails, private individuals sending emails to the, they post pictures of people in the city, like wanted posters. They have an enemies hit list. The whole website is an enemies hit list, that's what it is. I know that the person who runs it has gotten an award from Mr. Brotman when he was mayor. I know that the person who runs this is also on the Human Relations Board of Glendale, which is extraordinarily disturbing to me, because apparently that board aims to foster mutual respect and understanding among all residents. It advises the council on ways to discourage prejudice and discrimination, and to support cultural awareness and community unity. Now, this is very disturbing, and it's not just that group. There's a group on the right that I've been back and forth with, who is totally anti-Semitic. I mean, somebody just died in Boulder now, this woman died who was firebombed. So I'm very disturbed about this. I'm disturbed that there's really an underbelly of hate here. It's very, very severe to watch, to look at a website, and your neighbors are, you know, this one woman, I found out she went to my synagogue, I didn't know her, my ex-husband knew her. She said, "Oh yeah, I see your, you know, your ex-wife, you know, talked to the city council." She said, "I can't even deal with that anymore, they've destroyed my life." They post about people's wives, they, I mean, it's something really disturbing. It's the Glendale Extremist Network, I would like you to take a look at their website, please, and their Instagram and Blue Sky accounts, and I would also like you to take a look that that person should not be on the committee. Now, I know my name is going to come on this, this, this website now, and I have no problem with, with, you know, he wants to destroy me, I'll try to destroy him. I have no, I have no problem with that. You know, I have no, I'm a New Yorker, you know, we believe in revenge. So that's, that's, that's not an issue for me. But I will tell you, not only is it, it's very disturbing in this community, it's also a crime. It's actually cyberbullying, and it's a penal code. It's penal code 653.2. It's actually a crime. He's threatening people's lives, it's tortuous interference, it's interfering, telling people not to go to their businesses, if they're a therapist, not to visit them. This, this is very disturbing, it's actually threatening people's lives. If you call somebody dangerous, and not to go near them, and you put a poster up about them, that they're filming minors, how do you know somebody with a gun doesn't say, "Hey, God, that guy's dangerous, he may hurt my child," and then you do something to that person? I don't know what the, the council can do, but this is, this, something has to be done here. You have to at least make a statement about this level of hate. This is, this is very serious. I don't think you see, if you looked at that website, it would shock you. It shocked me when I saw it, I couldn't, I couldn't believe, I couldn't believe my eyes. Yeah, and I couldn't believe that I'm seeing wanted posters around the city with people's faces. Whether you agree with them or not, what's the difference, you know, what's the difference? You don't have to put their lives in danger, their livelihoods in danger, and their reputations, destroy their reputations. So I would like this to be addressed in some fashion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Rama Hughes.
Hello, everybody. Hello, Mr. Mayor, esteemed City Council members, your impressive staff, and my neighbors. My name is Rama Hughes, I've lived in Glendale for 20 years. I'm a husband, a dad, and a teacher, and one of the subjects that I get to teach is media literacy. The last time that I was here, one of our neighbors used the word illegals to describe people who were parking and scheduling doctor's appointments in our city. None of us can know, just by looking at our neighbors, if they're in this country legally or not, that's what due process is for. I stand by the American presumption that each of us is innocent until proven guilty. Tonight, though, I want to point out the word illegals as an example of inflammatory language, and I want to caution all of us to be especially skeptical when our neighbors use inflammatory language. Inflammatory language includes generalizations, insults, slurs, and emotionally charged words like illegals, like murder, rape, genocide, like eating. like murder, rape, genocide, like eating pets. Inflammatory language is powerful because it communicates our fear and our anger to others that can stir people to action on our behalf. And there are times when inflammatory words are used accurately. Because they stir strong emotions, though, inflammatory words threaten our critical thinking. So one of the things that we teach students is to be cautious when someone uses inflammatory language. Inflammatory language, like illegals, is a red flag that we should slow down and do research about the subjects being discussed. I did that after our last meeting. I looked up the word illegals. Illegals is considered a dehumanizing term for people who are in a country without proper authorization. Illegal immigrant describes, one, someone who enters a country without being checked in by an immigration official, or, two, someone who stays in a country after their visa has expired. I learned that even illegal immigrant can be inflammatory because I'm echoing what Jackie Kish said, and thank you for sharing. The illegality of being in our country without permission is not a criminal offense, it is a civil offense. When people say that undocumented immigrants are criminals, it's only true in the same way that any of us who receive parking tickets are criminals. Equating civil offenders to rapists and murderers is dangerous exaggeration. I also looked up how many immigrants are in California illegally. According to the Pew Institute, 1.8 million people are estimated to be here without proper documentation. Out of 39.4 million people in California, that means that about 1 in 20 Californians are here without proper authorization. It's worth noting that many people's authorizations expire through no fault of their own. Our immigration services are notoriously backlogged, so an honest immigrant's wait for hearings and paperwork can take years. Those immigrants are here illegally, not because of their actions, but because our immigration system has failed to serve them in a timely manner. If anyone here doubts this, I hope you'll look it up. In the same reading, I discovered that undocumented immigrants are actually less likely to commit crimes compared to native-born citizens. Research shows that higher immigrant populations are not associated with higher crime rates. The opposite might even be true. I encourage you to look that up also. Our immigrant neighbors might be making us safer. We can't control the words that other people use, but we can control how we react to them. When someone in this room or in this country uses words that alarm us, I ask you to please be especially skeptical. Anyone's use of inflammatory language should be our sign that emotions are high and it's time to slow down, be brave, and consider opposing viewpoints. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next is Ramela Uragi.
Hi, everybody. Actually, I'm pretty sure that this council is aware of the... That the number of renovations that's happening in this city. And, but still, there are a lot of tenants come to the tenants' union and with this case of renovation, eviction based on renovations. And these people, we're always encouraging them to come to this council and present their cases to this council. And, yeah, but unfortunately, it's very hard to encourage them to do this because a lot of these people are... I don't understand the language. Undocumented. They're, yeah, they're undocumented people that, yeah, they're being evicted. Yeah, they cannot come to this council because they're afraid they get arrested here. And, yeah, just... Even we are still waiting for somebody to come here and present his case here or talk to the council about his case, but he didn't show up, unfortunately. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that this council knows that there's a lot of renovation in this city. Yeah, just the thing that we... I, demanding to put a hold on these evictions, renovations. And, yeah, the other thing that I'm asking is to stop, I think to do something about this rate that's happening in this city. It's overwhelming. And, yeah, it's... Got to do something about this, about the rates, about these renovations. And, yeah, that would be all. Thank you.
Next is Ellen Durham.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. This will be quick. There were news items yesterday reporting that Governor Gavin Newsom had signed two bills, state bills into law modifying SEQA, California's Environmental Quality Act, to an extent that really hasn't been seen before. You know, I haven't had time to delve into the details, but it is to loosen certain SEQA requirements to encourage more development, both residential and industrial, with fewer hurdles that there have been in the past under SEQA. So I respectfully would request the council and the city manager to ask our Director of Community Development to prepare a report analyzing what these SEQA changes, what effects they could have on future development in Glendale so that we, as a community, can better understand any changes that might be coming. Thank you.
Good idea.
Thank you. We have our final public speaker is on air. Mike, you have five minutes.
Hello, good evening, council, mayor, staff. My name is Mike Borisov. I'm a recent graduate from UC San Diego. I studied public policy, and I minored in urban studies and planning. And I wanted to call in and ask the council to send a letter of support for AB 648. This assembly bill will allow for student and workforce housing to be built with no zoning exceptions on college campuses or on parking lots. An example would be the Glendale Community College parking lot that is located to the north and south of the main campus. These would be prime real estate for the college to develop, to either issue a bond or ask a developer to come and build for them, to build either affordable student housing or affordable workforce housing. This is good policy because it will lead to more housing for everyone and decrease prices for the neighboring northern and downtown Glendale region. A lot of students who do attend Glendale Community College are currently in a low-income household, and they would greatly benefit from this housing development, this potential housing development in the region. I, myself, actually have lived in a publicly-built building in the UC system. I built... Sorry, I live in a built UC Pepper Canyon West facility that housed over 100 students, and I was able to pay only $900 a month for rent and afford my education. And that would not be allowed, basically, 20 years ago without this exemption. And so similarly, this is a good bill that would allow an exemption for Glendale Community College as well, to build workforce housing, build student housing, allow people to not only study in Glendale, to actually be able to afford Glendale to live there, not commute long hours out of district, and be able to save money or afford their education. I also want to remind everyone, not every student in Glendale Community College is like a young post-high school graduate. A lot of them are working members of the working class. They have families, they have students. Similarly, with a lot of people who worked there who were adjunct professors, they're not tenured yet, so they work part-time or don't get paid extremely well. This could aid them as well. So again, it's Assembly Bill 648, and I would politely ask you to send a letter of support currently in the Assembly for the local committee, local city council committee. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is all.
Thank you. What is next?
Next is New Business. A councilmember, Brotman, has requested to discuss submitting a letter of opposition unless amended for Assembly Bill AB 306 by Schultz-Rivas.
Yes, okay. Well, this item is moot, actually. Originally, I was hoping that we would weigh in on AB 306, which is a bill that freezes building code changes for residential buildings, not commercial, just residential, but is very problematic for a lot of reasons. Anyway, the language of AB 306 was extracted and put into a budget trailer bill called SB 130 that was passed yesterday. It's the same bill that I think included the reforms to SEQA. So there's no longer any point for us to submit this letter. But I have... I do have two requests. One is I would like to hear from staff at our next meeting in two weeks, our building official, perhaps, or whoever from CDD, to talk about what the implications are because despite the intent of the bill, which was to make new housing easier to build and faster to build, I think this actually will make it more complicated. So I would like to hear about that. And I would like to put on the New Business agenda for two weeks from now just a placeholder to discuss energy-reach code options because, you know, hopefully I will be able to do my own research between now and two weeks from now. But there may be a short window for us to introduce some things before this bill takes effect, and I want to understand what those are and if there's a discussion that we need to have, be able to have that quickly. So I would like to have that on the New Business agenda for two weeks. We can call it, again, Energy Reach Code Options, just to keep it broad.
And just so I'm clear, that was included in SB 130. Those provisions were in SB 130.
The provisions of AB 306 that I was hoping that we would take a position on were basically that language was extracted and put into SB 130 and were passed. So AB 306 now is kind of a shell. And there is some talk that AB 306, that Assembly Member Schultz may use that vehicle to do some cleanup. That's possible. There's some things, I think, I'm trying to find out over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'd like some background because I'm not that... Mr. Carpet?
Before we adjourn, I just want to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July, and let's go celebrate this great nation, appreciate what it's given to us. This is the best country in the world. I've lived all over the world. No one is like USA, so happy Fourth of July, everyone.
Do we need a second? No, that's okay. All right. And if there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Move down a second.